I'd like to call the order to the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:00 for the Village of Bartlett counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
Bob Bucaro.
Here.
Steve Callahan. Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
Mark Hopkins.
Here.
Julie Capitacakis. George Coziel.
Here.
John Miaso.
Here.
Michelle Sarwas.
Here.
Mike Worden.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes. I would like a correction in the zoning board minutes toward the end. Brian had made a clarification because there were charges of prejudice or racism or something. I forgot how it was worded. And when he said that, I said, "Thank you, Brian. That needed to be said." And that is not in the minutes. I would like it to be in the minutes.
And we will add that. Thank you.
Okay.
So, just for clarification.
What should I do?
We're going to call each of your names for the zoning board of appeals minutes. I understand some of you were not on the zoning board of appeals. You could abstain.
Just have to go to Julie, so I'll pass it back around to her.
I'm all set.
John, if you, I'm going to call, we're going to call everybody's name for the zoning board of appeals minutes. If you were not on the zoning board of appeals, I would ask that you abstain. Okay? And vice versa for the, then the planning commission meeting minutes. We do need a motion and a second.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
I move.
Moved by Charlie. Who's second?
I got second.
He can't second, can he? Because it wasn't.
Again, it has, it should be a ZBA member.
I'll second.
Michelle will second.
I'll second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Michelle. Please call the roll.
Bob Bucaro.
Yes.
Steve Callahan. Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Mark Hopkins.
Abstain.
Julie Capitacakis.
Abstain.
George Coziel.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Abstain.
Michelle Sarwas.
Yes.
Mike Worden.
Yes.
So, we have five votes and three abstentions. Thank you. And now we can move on to the planning commission meeting minutes. So, we need a motion.
A motion by a former.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Mark. Please call the roll. And again, we, the former ZBA abstained.
Bob Bucaro.
Abstain.
Charlie DeVoe.
Abstain.
Mark Hopkins.
Yes.
Julie Capitacakis.
Yes.
George Coziel.
Abstain.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas.
Abstain.
Mike Worden.
Abstain.
Okay, three votes yes and five abstentions. Thank you.
Best we can do, right?
That's right.
Okay, so, we have the, item five, old business, no, I'm sorry, APA, item four, APA, Illinois Planning and Zoning Officials Training. Take it away.
All righty. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having us. On behalf of the American Planning Institute, on behalf of the Chedek Institute, who also supports this endeavor that we have, it's really great when communities open their doors to us and when their planning commissioners and their other elected and appointed officials take the time to, you know, spend some of your own free time with us and learn about the duties that you've accepted and the role that you're playing in your community. I think it's a theme that will, a lot this evening, but it really is a very important role that you have. And Tom and myself are very happy to help you and facilitate that role in any way that we can in the time that we have this evening. Do we have a, will this click the PowerPoint? Look at that. The magic of technology, he says. It is, the switch is in the on position. There we go. Magic. That's the only thing that's going to go wrong tonight. Smooth sailing. My name is Phil Green. I am the transportation and long-range planner for the village of Hoffman Estates. I've been in that role for about two months now. Previously, I was village planner for the village of Woodridge. You may detect a bit of an accent. You would be correct. I was born and raised in the UK. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology and then a master's in town and regional planning, both of those from the University of Liverpool. And then, since moving here, like I say, I've kind of had that work experience, but I'm also very active within the American Planning Association, specifically the Illinois chapter. So, that's our professional body for urban planners, where we all get together and get very nerdy. So, within that role, I am a planning commission trainer, which is the role you see me in tonight. I'm also chair of our membership committee. And this year, I was honored to be awarded Illinois Emerging Planner for the Year. So, that's a little trophy that sits on my cabinet at work and, you know, something that I kind of hope to live by every day and come out and do things like this and invest
I will stand as close as possible. I don't have a little trophy on my bookshelf, but you'll get me one. Perfect, okay. I'm Tom Farassi. I'm the Planning and Economic Development Manager with the village of Carroll Stream. I've been in Carroll Stream now for about six years, so close by to Bartlett, which is great. And prior to that, I was a planner in Schaumburg. I started there as the entry-level planner, and I worked my way up to the, to be the Planning and Permits Manager. And then, like I said, I've been in Carroll Stream now for about six years, like Phil. I'm somewhat newer as a planning commission trainer, starting this year. I'm also a member of the, what's referred to as MDRN, or the Municipal Design Review Network's Advisory Committee. This year, and actually the past three years, I've been the advisory committee chairman, where we look at different design review components and topics and issues. So, that's, that's kind of an interest of mine. I initially thought I wanted to be an architect and then realized I can't really draw, so if you can't be an architect, become a city planner. So, that's what I did. And so, here I am with Phil tonight to talk about the ins and outs of being on a planning and zoning commission. So, I'm really interested in hearing your thoughts and questions and comments. Based on how you approved the minutes tonight and talking a little bit with Roberta, it sounds as if maybe there was kind of a merge, merger of commissions or groups, which is great. So, I thought maybe it would be interesting if you all wanted to introduce yourselves and just mention how long you've been on, well, I won't say how long you've been on this new commission, but maybe how long you've been on a commission or a board for Bartlett, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. My name's Julie Capitacakis, and I'm sort of a newbie. I've only been on, I was on the planning commission for a very short time, for just about a couple of months, so looking forward to joining this board here.
Charlie DeVoe. I think I've been on the zoning board of appeals just over two years now.
And you must like Kansas. Is that, I see a theme?
Graduate.
Okay.
Daughter's a graduate. Son-in-law's a graduate. My son got accepted there, but he went to Illinois.
George Coziel. I've been on the ZBA for 19 years.
Mike Worden. I was on the zoning board for 43 years, and before that, I was on the Bartlett Preservation Area Commission.
Okay.
Bob Bucaro. On the ZBA for 10 years.
Mark Hopkins. At planning commission for 25 years and Economic Development Commission for five years before that.
Great.
Michelle Sarwas. I was on the zoning commission for two years.
Okay, great.
John Miaso. I'm zoning commission, about seven years I've been in.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
Cool. Do I have to, like, squat? Can you hear me? Are we good? I swear, being six foot four has its problems. So, really, you know, Tom kind of set us off on the right note. The way I like to do these, the way I like to do anything, it's so much better if it's conversational. So, we have time baked in throughout the presentation for questions, but please feel free to stop either of us at any point with thoughts, questions, points of clarification, commentary, brief asides, whatever you want to do, this is your time, and we're happy to help you out and facilitate that in whatever way you see fit. I would also say, this is my kind of personal request, you all have copies of the slides. Try not to look at them while we do it, because you'll read ahead and you'll be further ahead than I am, and then you'll get bored. We won't be reading directly from the slides as we go through this. It'll be much more, like I say, conversational. And I find that sometimes when you have the slides in front of you, it's real tempting to just read that and tune us out. You know, use this as a resource. This is yours. You have this. Refer to it whenever you want to. But, you know, questions, comments, all of that stuff is really helpful throughout this. So, let's go through. We have a brief agenda, so we have about, you know, really, there's five main things we're going to touch upon this evening. Welcome and introductions, we've done, go us, and resources for commissioners is really a list that, like I say, you have that PowerPoint, you'll have access to it. But there are five key things that we're really going to touch on, and we're going to start with talking about you, because that's always way more interesting than talking about me. So, as I mentioned, it really can't be understated just how important folks like yourselves are to what we do as planners, right? My favorite analogy that I have heard is that we are expertly trained surgeons, but the only way that we can do our jobs is via a Bluetooth earpiece to someone in another room holding a scalpel. That's you. You have the scalpel, but none of the training that we do, and we are in another room, completely helpless to rush in there, so we're counting on you to do what needs to be done. There are multiple different things that you might do. Obviously, a lot of you have some pretty good tenure behind you already, so chances are you've already done some of this. But generally speaking, you will usually be the go-to for when it's time for your community to prepare a plan. That is the planning part of a planning and zoning commission. Your duty will be to be typically the steering group that is that first point of contact and the funnel of the voice for the community during that process. A couple of points in here, you know, you may or may not do visit developments after occupancy. I think that's always very interesting. You know, you don't want to be wandering onto building sites. That's typically inadvisable. But at the very end of the process, you might want to go and see what has happened based upon a case that you have heard, maybe a new business that you recommended for approval.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Did I understand you just said, "We shouldn't go visit a site beforehand"?
I, so.
For example, I, if I, I know something's being presented to us.
Sure.
I would like to go see, physically see what's there.
Yes. So, there are kind of, I guess I should clarify, there are two points in time. You may want to go and drive past, you know, whether it's a vacant site, brownfield site, empty building. I guess my point was you may not want to go there while there's active construction work.
Okay.
Going on, at a point where we need hives and hard hats. That might be the time we want to stay away. But yes, by all means, you know, that's something that I do and I encourage other planners I work with to do, is to get out to a site, you know, prior to any work being done and really get a feel for the physicality. So, you are in your position as appointed officials, and you'll work quite closely with your elected officials. They have different duties to you. They are involved in the development process. They make the final decision typically on most development process-related cases, but they also have other concerns. They have budgetary concerns. They have policy concerns. They have concerns related to the hiring and firing of personnel sometimes, depending on how hands-on that gets in different communities. All of that to say, the may and the will be times where you disagree on decisions. You know, you have had the, the very kind of specifically guided point of view as a planning and zoning commission to consider a particular case in a certain way, and they may disagree with that. I have personally been there in cases where a planning and zoning commission has made a recommendation based completely on findings of fact, because they're an appointed body who don't necessarily answer directly to an electorate. And then, I've seen a group of elected officials take a completely opposite tact, because the politics of the case was very different. So, that can happen, and you know, it can get frustrating. I've heard that from planning commissioners before. So, it's always worth having this just to really kind of get that understanding that there are other concerns that an elected body might have compared to an appointed Did I break it again? No, there we go. So, when it comes to working with your elected officials, everything is different. Everyone is different. Every community is different. But a few base ideas you can have. You can ask for clarification. You can have that conversation through your staff. If a decision that you recommended for approval, we'll say, we'll go in the affirmative. If you recommended a case for approval and then your village board rejected it, you can have that conversation as to why they wanted to disagree with your decision in that point. I have heard some communities will do annual dinners for their elected and appointed officials and have that opportunity to come together, in line with the Open Meetings Act, of course, where they'll get together and have that conversation and discuss common values. And, you know, potentially as a newer board, not to give you guys any work, but as a, you know, a newer, joined-together board, there's always great value in getting to know each other as people. Considerate comprehensive plan needs updating is something that I really like to hammer home with planning commissions. You hear a lot from planning commissions, the staff, that this isn't working or that isn't working, or I'm really tired of recommending approval of certain variances. Why is this development allowed to happen in this way? Things of that nature. It's always worth assessing, does this mean we need to change? Right? A lot of communities now are going through zoning code updates, because throughout the region, a lot of zoning codes are outdated and tired. You know, Tom's just gone through it where he works. I was going through it at my previous employment. I'm now going through it again at my new community, because it just is getting to be that time. And so, part of your position is to keep an eye on that, look at the decisions you're making, look at the decisions your board are making, and have those dialogues as to whether or not something needs to change, whether that you feel like a new plan is warranted or whether that might be an amendment to your zoning code. As for the planner and your staff, you guys are really lucky to have a whole team of staff. Not every community gets that. Some communities rely on outside consultants who they contract in. Other communities rely on people with no experience whatsoever, who are not planners by trade, but end up in that position. It happens. I have seen police and fire chiefs suddenly become directors of community development, and they are not familiar with the language and they are learning on the job. You guys are very fortunate to have a complete staff. We do a lot. I think that's fair to say, and I know that, you know, I'm speaking with the benefit of being able to complain, right, about knowing full well firsthand that, you know, everybody feels overworked, right? But we wear a lot of different hats. It's our job to be the first point of contact for yourselves, for the elected officials, for the developer who has a proposal, for the resident who doesn't like that proposal, for the resident who doesn't know what the proposal is, but has heard on Facebook that it's going to be Amazon, because everybody's heard on Facebook that every development now is going to be an Amazon warehouse. And they're worried and they're concerned, and they want to talk to someone, and that's us. I've been in the room for three hours with somebody, just listening to their concerns. That's what we do. And then, we take all of that, and then we have to listen to it and push it aside all at the same time, and present to you and present to the village board a technical, rational analysis of the situation. And so, that's our job. It's soft skill. It's hard skill. We are objective while being human and approachable, and we are your resource. If you take anything away from that, we are your resource. We work for the community. You are the voices of that community, and we are here for you to answer those questions, preferably ahead of the meeting. I know different staff have different opinions, and feel free to, you know, have your own take on that, but I'm definitely a, please call me ahead of time so I can prepare, kind of person, rather than frantically scrolling through an iPad on a dais while under a public hearing. We like to know what your concerns are, and we like to be able to give you the information that you need to make an accurate decision, and so that you feel comfortable and able to do your roles. That is what we are here to do. Okay. And that's really, you know, that's what's on this slide, working with the staff. Call us. Ask us questions. Send emails, preferably one at a time. Never try to reply all to everybody, so that way we're not violating any Open Meetings Acts. If you, you know, you've taken the first step tonight by having Tom and myself here to talk you through this training, but consider this step one. You will come across issues where you might think, "Hey, we could use more training on that." Speak to your staff. Let them know, like, "Hey, this feels like a blind spot. We'd like more information." It could be a workshop like we're having tonight. It could be as simple as a memo. I've found myself writing memos on soil reports before, just because the planning commission I was working with at the time felt that they needed that to do their job Do I have to, like, point it? Do I, are there magic words I should be using? Nope. Thank you. Key to everything, and I see that you all have Chromebooks, which is fantastic. I'm super genuinely impressed by that. I've worked with planning commissions before who wanted their reports digitally, which I'm all in favor of saving paper and usually the time of the admin assistant, whose job it is to assemble those packets. But we didn't provide them with Chromebooks, so they're all sitting there on a dais on their cellphones, looking like they're not engaged, but I know that they're super engaged. It's just not a great public image if everyone's sitting there on the cellphone, so this is wonderful. But the staff report really is kind of the crooks of your hearing, right? You should be reading your staff report. They will take, you know, we've got a few examples on this slide of what information could be in there, but every staff report is going to be different, because every planner is different. We're all human. They should be written in a way that gives you the information you need to make the decision. You should know what property is you're discussing, right? You should know the address. You should know the location. You should know what's around it. Some staff will center a staff report around a comprehensive plan. Other staff are a little bit more realistic if they're in a community where the comprehensive plan is perhaps a little bit outdated and there's more relevant information that we should be referencing. So, you might not always see comprehensive plan referenced. It really depends on the case and the situation in the community. You should always find, if there are findings of fact, the standards of review for that. Are you, do you write the standards of fact here? Do you, are the findings of facts, or you write them? Okay. Some communities will have the applicants do it. So, your staff will have your findings of fact. You should be very familiar with those, and we'll touch upon why as we go through this. But your findings of fact really are your protection. They are the basis for your decision, and you should be, if you're reading your findings of fact and you have concerns, questions, clarifications, that's where, at least myself as a staff member, I'm hoping you're picking up the phone ahead of that meeting and having that conversation with me. Look at that. It's kind of, I feel like I'm gambling every time I press a button, but I'm here for it. It's okay. We kind of touched upon a couple already as you were introducing yourselves, but there may be other commissions. Different municipalities have different bodies, so design review, economic development, environment, historic preservation, transportation. There may be, depending on your processes, some communities will have it where it'll run kind of through a gamut of them, potentially coming to a body such as this as like the second to last in the proceeding. So, you will receive a staff report that may have the recommendations of those other bodies. It all depends on the community. But it's worth just being aware that those types of structures exist, and as issues arise within a community or as things change and priorities shift, these can, you know, start and end, right? I know that communities I've worked in and other places now, a big focus is, usually they're calling them like Human Rights Commissions, and that's in response to some of the issues that we saw on a national scale a couple of years ago. So, you may see more of a bent towards issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion, perhaps formalized through a commission, whose job it is to consider projects and other policy issues through that lens. Other key folks you need to get to know. Know your municipal attorney. Usually, you'll want to be working through staff to your attorney. You don't necessarily want to be calling them, because typically lawyers like billable hours, and so we like to try and manage that as best as we can. But they are, they should be your guiding star. They should be, you should be having the conversations with them as to whether you're acting in a legal, ethical, professional way. We have a whole section on, you know, specifically legal-related issues. I will speak for both of us right now. We are not your attorney, so any advice we give you is not legal advice. It's just some tips and tools of the trade that we have picked up and that the APA has picked up. But any questions at all, you should always be taking the advice of your village attorney, because they will be the ones in the trial room if it ever comes to that. As to the public, it's always an interesting relationship with the public, right? We want to listen to them, because it's their community too. We want to hear them. The public process is very important. There is a reason it is so enshrined within the law itself. But we also have to be careful that we're never trying to treat this as a direct democracy. You don't want to be sitting there and tallying up, "Okay, I've got 15 comments in favor and 55 against, right? So, therefore, I'm going to vote no." Because that isn't necessarily how our processes work. So, when we have our public, we want to be listening to them, and we really want to be listening, not just hearing, but listening. We want to be taking that opportunity to think it through and, you know, well, I heard on Facebook, I'm going to use that example again, I heard on Facebook it's an Amazon Distribution Center, right? Well, if I know that isn't true, thank you for your comment. I'm not going to necessarily internally take that into consideration. A point that I think is really important on this is be courteous to all. The rules and expectations of the planning process apply to everyone. They apply to me. They apply to you. They apply to the developer who has a proposal. They apply to the homeowner who's seeking a variance. They also apply to anyone who's coming into a room to watch, to pass comment, to be involved in the process. So, we can expect a basic level of dignity. I think one really key rule that I always try and work with my planning commission chairs to enforce is no clapping. I'm going to use that as the example, right? Because that can be really intimidating. If you have a group of people who are all lined up against an issue, and statistics have shown time and time again that if you're against an issue, you're way more likely to come to a meeting than people who are for it. And if you've got three people who really think that this brand-new coffee shop is a great idea, and 15 people who have lined up against it, because they've heard it's going to be an Amazon Distribution Center and not actually a coffee shop, it's a front, and they're going to be shipping parcels out the back of it. And then, every time one of those 15 comes up and the other 14 are applauding, that can be very intimidating for the three, and they're not going to get to feel as heard. So, that's really important, that we set those expectations for courteousness and neighborliness, I think is a great way to think of it. Varda cadaver. I don't know. There we go. Okay. So, I've touched on them a couple of times, but there's also another party in this, and dependent on the situation, sometimes it can feel like that can be a very adversarial role, but it doesn't have to be, and that's the developer. So, you know, I touched upon before, one of the key things that your roles will be is, in any planning process, you're usually a steering committee. You're usually the people that are kind of one of the first to be asked about it. You know, if your staff brings in a consultant to write a new plan for the area, chances are they're going to want to talk to all of you. Having a plan and implementing that plan are two different things. A plan is a shopping list, okay? A plan is a.
What?
A shopping list. Yes. It's the accent. I don't come with subtitles. I've tried. I've tried. But feel free to ask me for clarification on anything. It's a shopping list. It's a list of things that the community wants. To get those, you've got to go shopping and the developers all have products. And they're going to bring their products to you and ask if you want to have one of their products. And so they are, if we take the affirmative approach and the, you know, assuming in good faith from everyone, understanding that they all want to make money. But if we take it all in good faith, they are trying to help you to implement your vision and trying to help you build the community you want. Part of your role is to decide whether the product they are selling matches what is on that list that the community has of their needs and wants, right? So now to, to put on their shoes. It can be expensive to be a developer. And understanding that the bottom line and the almighty dollar really does drive everything that they do and that there are cost benefit analysis conducted for how many times they blink during a given meeting. Those bills can get expensive. I have seen developers fork over $350,000, $500,000 just to architects and engineers to get plan sets drawn and redrawn because they've come in front of commissions and boards who were indecisive and who continued the meeting over and over again to, oh, go and tweak this, reduce this by 20%, change the bushes to this. And they'd have a different meeting for each of those. You don't want to get into that situation because you want to, A, have faith in your staff that they've done a full and thorough review of the project before it even comes to you and that they are presenting work to you that they feel is in as good a shape as possible. And believe me, if we are fighting with the developer, you'll know because we are very good at writing that impassively aggressively into our staff reports. That is a skill. That is a skill.
Amen to that.
We won't say it outright, but you will know that we don't think it should be here, but our hand has been forced. More nine times out of 10, we feel like it's in a situation where you can deliberate and discuss without necessarily needing to get into those weeds, right? Michael Blue, who is a principal with Tescor Associates and kind of runs the program for the planning commission trainers, has a really good line that good process is economic development. So certainty of a decision is huge to a developer and that doesn't mean that they know it's going to be a slam dunk yes every time, but it should mean that they can be reasonably assured that if they follow the rules, that they'll know what the outcome is going to be and they shouldn't be getting any surprises on the night or any requests that are kind of outside of the realm of your code. If you see something continually coming up and especially in the realm that we're in today where things are constantly evolving and constantly changing and there's new types of businesses and new ways of doing business and you're like, hey, I'm going to use the example of truck docks, right? That's something that comes up a lot, like, hey, 200,000 square foot warehouse with 50 different parking spaces for trucks. Well, not every zoning code addresses that. And if you see that as a continual issue, that's the point when you're having a conversation with your staff like, hey, can we look at a text amendment to fix that? Because I would really like to be able to consider that as an issue. You don't want to be doing that kind of on the fly with a developer in front of you because you may not have any basis to do so and it may make everyone's lives that little bit more difficult. This is kind of by to by, but other things to be aware of. There's a lot of, Illinois has the most units of local government in the United States. We are subdivided at a ridiculous level into various different taxing bodies, all competing for time, attention and good faith from the public. And so it might not necessarily begin, end or end with you. It might not necessarily begin, end or end with the village board. So they could need to go off and get stormwater permits from MWRD. There's, there's plenty of different agencies. If it's on an I dot right away, they're going to need to go and get permits from them for the access. So there's a lot of competing different folks involved. I've been in a case before where a fire district wanted a developer of a retirement community to pay for new signalization on a very busy intersection that was two different state routes. And that was going to cost them somewhere in the $800,000 region for all the work that the fire district was expecting. And the developer calls me up and he's like, Phil, I shouldn't have to pay for this. And I'm like, okay, then say you're not going to pay for it. And he's like, but they've said I have to. Right. And you can say no. You have to be prepared to justify that no, but you can say no. So just be aware of that. You don't necessarily have to consider all of these issues. But, you know, a fire district might come along and ask for something because they're a taxing body with budget constraints, just the same as we all are. And they want to see something done. But hear out the arguments as to whether or not you feel it's rational for that request and whether the developer's done a good job in stating their case as to why they may be willing to meet that. Real briefly, regional planning commissions. So we fall under CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. So regional planning commissions are a federal requirement. Technically speaking, they are, the main job is to administer funding for roads and bridges. That's, that's how they came into existence. We are very fortunate to, in my opinion, be within the Chicago metropolitan area because CMAP really goes above and beyond. They do so much more than that. They have so many various grant programs. You know, in those communities I mentioned before, who maybe don't have a fantastic staff like you do, they will loan planners out to communities that cannot afford a planner. And they will go ahead and just send one of their own staff there to work for a little while to help them out. A really good thing that I would recommend all of you take a look at is something called a CMAP Community Snapshot. And it's just a PDF that is all the demographics of your community. And that's so, so helpful to use. I send that to anyone who ever asks me for like a population count. I'm like, hey, read this whole eight page document instead. The information you're asking for is on page one, but it's super worth knowing things like, how expensive is it to live in your community? How many people don't have access to the internet? All that information is contained within that and that's all put up free of charge from CMAP, which is wonderful.
Can you repeat what that was called?
It's the Community Snapshot.
We have a good staff, don't we?
You do. All right. This is the section that I call the bathroom aisle in the Home Depot because it's full of cheap plugs. I'm literally a professional comedian, it's okay. So we are here on behalf of the Illinois Chapter of the American Planning Association. We offer something that not everywhere else does, which is what's called a chapter only membership. So it is a national body, which is very, very expensive to be a part of. And then the Illinois State Chapter offers a $50 a year individual membership where you don't get access to all of the national things, like the national conference or the magazine that they do. But you do get access to all of our local state level events, typically for free or at a discounted price, dependent on how that event is being run. We have a forum, which is very, very useful and planners are in there all the time, asking each other's questions. And every year, this year it's September 28th through the 30th at the old post office in Chicago, we have our annual conference where everyone gets together and we have sessions that do deep dives into planning law, that do specific sections, sessions on diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. Went to a really good session last year on trying to reduce roadway fatalities down to zero. So very kind of specific sessions. And you get a discounted entrance to that if you are a chapter only member. And we are, this year, it's on specifically my work plan in the role that I have within the organization, trying to develop a specific spade of programming just for planning commissioners. So kind of the resources that you guys need. One thing from a training I did recently that we're taking away and working on was someone asked a really great question. Can you give us a list of questions to ask when we don't know what to ask so we don't sit there looking stupid? I'm like, why has no one ever thought of that? Just a list of generic questions just to have in your back pocket so you can be engaged when you need to be engaged. So things like that are things that we're working on. Like I say, it's at a much cheaper rate than the national body will charge you. Like I say, this is the official time for any questions on that. But if you, if you have any, if not, I encourage you to keep happening them throughout. Tom?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We supposed to clap now?
I would prefer.
Okay. So let's see if this works. Ah. It worked, sorry. Okay. So continuing along with all of the wonderful responsibilities that you all have. So as Phil had indicated, you know, we're here to kind of, I, I don't like the term civil servant, public servant, but that, that is kind of what we all are. So we're here to work with the, the public and I can tell right away that everyone is courteous and, and you're going to be kind to people who, who come into the room, whether it's a developer, a business owner, a resident. And so continuing, continuing to do that with, with your meetings is very important. I think one of the, the comments here, one of the bullet points here is avoiding jargon in, in meetings. You know, as, as staff, we, we try to do that as well, not just for members of the, the public, but for all of you. I sometimes struggle with that in my staff reports. I, I try to figure out, should I use the term, you know, the west elevation of the building? Should I say the west facade? Or should I just say the west side of the building? So likewise, maybe all of you should, should, you know, use that type of wording or terminology when you're talking to, you know, members of the public who are here, who might not understand things that, that we all use in our staff reports or when we're talking, you know, in our meetings, just so there's that, that commonality as you're, as you're conducting the meeting itself. And I think those last bullet points to being patient, courteous, respectful, as, as Phil mentioned a few slides ago, and remaining calm. If you have any type of contentious case or contentious meeting, there's no point in having any type of debate or any type of argument. It, it's sometimes difficult to not take things personally, but there, there's, there's really no need to do that because you're, you're all doing your jobs and you're a recommending body and you're going to do the best job possible to make sure that a project is either recommended for approval or recommended for denial, depending on, you know, the situation at hand. So those are your main responsibilities. Continuing along with what the responsibilities are during the, the meeting or the, or the hearing itself. Generally, you're going to be following Robert's Rules of Order or if you have specific rules that you follow for kind of the flow of the meeting and how you're following the agenda and how things might come up during the, the meeting or during the, the, the public hearing itself. So that's always important to make sure that you're following that. As I had mentioned in the previous slide, and I think Phil talked about this as well, you don't necessarily want to have debates with either a member of the public or with the developer. That's, that's never really appropriate. And again, you know, you don't want to take things to kind of a personal or even a nasty level. Just try and remain calm and make sure that you're hearing everything, all of the testimony that everyone's providing and everyone's giving. And then you either answer the question or, or, you know, provide your statement and then, then move along. I think that's, that's, that's pretty crucial and pretty important. So, but I can tell everyone here is level headed, so I'm sure that never happens, right? And I know Phil commented that you don't want to continue a, a hearing for non-essential reasons, I'll say. But if the applicant hasn't necessarily done their job, usually staff will let you know that in a subtle way, that maybe there's something missing or maybe their special use request isn't as special as they would like it to be, or their variation doesn't necessarily have that, that hardship justification that it should have. But you can continue a case, you can continue a hearing. The developer or the property owner might say, please, please, don't continue it. You know, there's a, there's a financial reason why I, I'd like you to get a recommendation from this commission this month at, at this meeting. But again, if they haven't done their job, you need additional information to provide your professional recommendation on a project, then by all means, continue the meeting. But again, not for kind of superficial reasons. Make sure that they're for, for valid reasons so that you, you get the, the additional information that you need to, to do your jobs and, and to provide that solid recommendation on the project.
What do you think about Tom's straw polls taken prior to a continuance?
I think that's actually a good idea. You know, in some instances, there might be certain aspects of a project that maybe the, the commission feels comfortable with and other aspects that you don't. Maybe a traffic issue or a landscaping issue or some issue that maybe it was brought up during the meeting. And if the applicant or the developer doesn't have the solid information that they can provide, then sure, the chairman could maybe ask, let's take a straw poll vote.
Or, or if the commission and the developer start smelling that there's a no coming, right? Without certain modifications, you know, then you might give them the opportunity to withdraw and modify their request.
Sure, yes, yeah. And that's where the continuation might come in. Like you could take an extra month and, and modify your plans and come back to us and, and, you know, we can re-review it based on the information that, that was reviewed tonight. I think that's, I think that's valid. Sometimes the developer might want to take a chance and the chairman can say, all right, you might get a negative recommendation from us tonight and they might say, well, I'll roll the dice and I'll go to the village board with that negative recommendation because they have their timeframe or their timeline that they want to move forward with and that's their choice. But I, I, I think that that's a valid approach that you can sometimes take. So yeah, that's, if they're willing to gamble, then I guess that's, that's their choice, but that's.
Yeah, they're willing to take a no to the village board, but if they're not, you know, we might accommodate them with a continuance.
Sure, absolutely. Yes. Yeah. No, that's a good question. Yeah. There we go. And again, making sure that when you're voting on a project, that it's based on the standards and we're going to talk about that, I think in the next section, kind of the findings of fact or the specific standards that you have in the code or that are provided in the, in the staff report, that it's, that you're voting, it's specifically related to those standards that you've reviewed and it's not based on maybe a personal view or a personal belief on something. That's never really appropriate. It, it needs to be a professional recommendation, you know, based on your codes and your ordinances and what you've reviewed on the plans and what you've reviewed in the staff report itself. You want to keep an open mind and you also want to make sure, and I think this fourth bullet point here is really important, making sure that you understand that just because you have audience members who are opposed to a project, that doesn't mean that everyone in the community is opposed to the project. Because I think as Phil mentioned, you know, previously, folks who like something don't usually come to the meetings. Wouldn't that be nice if we had a room full of people who said, we love this project. Please, let's get it approved, let's get it built. No one does that. If someone likes something, they say, great, okay, it's, it's, let's have it move forward. That typically doesn't happen though. People who, who either have a question or a concern about a project, that's when they show up to the meeting or that's when they, you know, attend via Zoom and, and voice their, their concerns, their opinions. So, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a bad project. They might have valid concerns or valid issues. So again, we shouldn't disregard those, those questions or their concerns that they're bringing up. But that doesn't mean that, that it's a, it's a bad project per se or that the community as a whole, oh boy, if there's 10 people in the room who are saying it's a bad project, well then it must be that it's, it must mean that it's bad for the community. That's not necessarily the case. So if you've reviewed things based on the standards and based on information that's been provided in the staff report, then again, you've hopefully done your jobs as, as the commission members, so. And this, the fifth bullet point too, I think is important as well. Discussing with members only during the meeting itself, and we're going to talk about kind of when to talk about projects and when not to talk about projects in kind of a later section. But, you know, just trying to make sure that you're not talking about the project, you know, in the back room over there and that all communication is, is during the, the meeting itself. So if you have questions or comments, you know, doing it during the meeting. Although, as Phil mentioned, contacting staff before the meeting, that's perfectly fine. But in a group setting, you know, making sure you're doing it as a group here in the public hearing process, not having three or four members, you know, in that back room. Because that's, that's probably not the appropriate thing to do. So you have a bunch of codes and ordinances that you have to familiarize yourselves with, zoning and signage and subdivisions. And so there's a bunch of stuff though, that you don't have to worry about. There's other groups and, and entities that, that they worry about that, those items. Either staff or the village board or not even the municipality. And so for instance, if a project, let's say, is being built or developed in a, in a TIF district or in a tax increment financing district, there's, you know, going to be a, a financial aspect or component of the project, right? That's not necessarily under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Maybe they have to get a special use approved or some type of site plan approval that, that would be reviewed by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's fine. But any financial aspects of the project, that's going to be taken care of by the elected officials. They'll review maybe some type of They'll review maybe some type of agreement or something to that effect. So that wouldn't necessarily be discussed here before the commission. Likewise, you know, building code-type issues generally wouldn't or shouldn't be discussed, you know, by the Planning and Zoning Commission either. I previously worked with a commission member who, he was in the trades industry, he was a construction manager, and so he would sometimes ask, he would, you know, sometimes put the developer on the spot, especially if there was maybe an architect who was acting as the applicant for a project, and talk about, you know, the construction of the building. And we'd have to remind him after the meeting that that's really not, that's not a zoning issue, that's not a, you know, the building's going to be constructed based on the village's building code requirements. But the building code isn't in the zoning code, it's not in the sign code, it's not in the subdivision code. So, yes, of course, we want the building to be constructed safely, but our building official is going to make sure of that. So, so just make sure that, you know, you're reviewing things that are really, again, under the purview of the commission. Likewise, if there's things like rental prices that maybe get discussed for an apartment project that you might be reviewing, a lot of times, a developer might say, you know, we're going to have so many one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments in this, in this, in this building, and they might give the rental amounts that they're proposing to have. And someone might, a commission member might say, well, those rents are out of line, they're more in the city of Chicago, not in a suburban market. Again, that's not under the purview of the commission. They, developer might find out the hard way that their rents are out of line, but that's not really the, under the jurisdiction of the commission. So just, you know, kind of keep in mind that you might have those questions in the back of your mind, but keeping things in line with the codes and ordinances that are really under the purview of the commission, zoning, signage, fencing, subdivision standards, things like that, okay? So the responsibilities of the chairperson. So obviously, all the commission members kind of set the tone for the commission, or for the meetings, I should say, but it's really the chairperson's responsibility to really clearly set the tone and control the meeting. So I don't see anyone here who looks like they scream or shout. I'm looking around, who might be the troublemaker? No, everyone looks okay. But it is really important to have a well-run meeting, and that can be tough sometimes. You know, you have to, you're following the agenda, you want to make sure that things are voted on properly. If, let's say, there's a project where there's, it's a special use that's being requested and there's two variations, and maybe the commission is in favor of the special use in one of the variations, but the second variation you're not in favor of, you did a straw poll vote and you're not in favor of that second variation, boy, how do we vote on that? And boy, we have to ask staff, and that's fine, you know, rely on staff for, you know, for getting that, you know, make sure you're doing things correctly. But having control of the meeting is really important, having control of who's out in the audience as well is really important as well. I said that twice. So, but I want to emphasize that, making sure that the meeting is well-run is really crucial and really, really critical. Phil had mentioned that, you know, besides staff, all of you might be the first or second group that the developer or the applicant is seen as kind of the face of the community. And so you want to make sure that you're presenting yourselves in a positive manner, even if you're maybe not giving a positive recommendation on their project. You want to be positive, you want to be professional, and you want to conduct the meeting in as positive of a way as possible. So just kind of keeping all of those points in check when you're conducting the meetings. So this flow chart here is just kind of a chart that shows a typical public hearing process. Every community might tweak this a little bit or handle things a little differently, but, you know, you're going to have a presentation of the staff report, presentation by the developer or the applicant, you'll have time for the public, obviously, to provide their questions or comments. The commission members, obviously, all of you have time to ask your questions or provide your comments, and then a vote on the project as well. So in the manner, or I shouldn't say the manner, but the order of that sometimes is different from community to community, but making sure that all of these steps are within the hearing process is important. And so this, again, is just the steps that you should see within each of your hearings. And then taking testimony is important too, because you want to make sure that you're having a fair hearing, so that all views are heard. So I don't know if, when you have your meetings, if you have some type of sign-in sheet where if anyone who wants to speak, they sign in first, or, I mean, do people stand here? I see that there's kind of two podiums, so does everyone stand here when they, typically they stand here? Okay, so, you know, making sure that anyone who wants to speak, they have the right to speak. I don't know if you limit time, do people get like five minutes maximum, or, depends on-
Depends how big it is.
Depends on how, yeah, okay, all right, yeah. So, but just, you know, providing adequate time and just the rights in and of itself for folks to be able to ask questions or voice their concerns, or again, if someone happens to show up and say, "I think this project is great," that's really important. And this last bullet point, I think, is the most important on this slide, the number of people for or against the application is not criteria for the decision. I actually had a case, boy, it was probably about 15 years ago. It was a vacant banquet hall, it had been vacant for several years, so it was property that was zone commercial, and it was adjacent to single-family residential properties. And so I think the residents maybe had just gotten used to this vacant property, even though you would think you'd want something to be developed. And so a developer came in, they were going to purchase the property and knock down the vacant banquet hall and redevelop it with a shopping center, a couple of commercial buildings, and it was going to be anchored by a grocery store. And so the word on the street initially was that the shopping center, or, sorry, the grocery store was going to be Trader Joe's. Great, you'll have a room full of people saying, "Get this built, we want a Trader Joe's near our neighborhood." And then it switched, and instead of Trader Joe's, it was going to be Aldi. And Trader Joe's and Aldi, they're kind of in the same grocery store family, so to speak. Either Trader Joe's owns Aldi or Aldi owns Trader Joe's, something like that, yeah. So I think Aldi owns Trader Joe's. But anyway, so whatever reason, the residents were none too pleased with that, let's just say. So at the time of the public hearing, the room was filled with residents. I was there by myself. I thought, holy cow. You would think, knock down this vacant, you know, kind of dilapidated building, build a nice new masonry shopping center, new landscaping, you know, new parking lot area, and would think they were building a prison next to them. In fact, they kind of wanted that, they said, "We're going to have terrible traffic problems in and out of our neighborhood." They're not installing enough landscaping, but they were. The residents wanted, I believe it was either a 10 or a 12-foot tall solid brick wall, brick wall around the entire property, so that it wouldn't infringe upon their neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. So, okay, commission members listened to everything for probably about three hours. They recommended approval unanimously of the project. Because, just because the room was full of people who, for whatever reason, didn't, they, Trader Joe's over Aldi, they didn't say that, but that's why they were there. That wasn't going to be the reason why they would vote against a project, that's kind of silly. The architecture was nice, the landscaping was great, they were going to have a nice solid fence, not a brick wall. And it went a few weeks later to our village board, they approved the project, it was built, I never heard a peep from the residents after that. And I'm sure they shop there, and I'm sure they go to the little restaurants that are there, and, you know, I'm sure everything's fine. So, yeah, so just because you have a room full of people against an application doesn't necessarily mean that's the reason why you should vote against a project. There's, you know, maybe other reasons, obviously, why you should vote for or against a project. And that's going to be based on the standards that I think Phil's going to talk about in a couple of minutes, so. See, and speaking of which, wow, that was like perfect timing. So, and I will say, since you guys are all enthralled in all of this, I might be walking around and taking some pictures for our APA, our planning website, so if I do, smile.
That's why I wore my best tie, specifically for this moment. One thing I want to touch on just before I go to findings of fact, on the topic of testimony, a thing that's becoming increasingly popular, I don't know if you folks have had one yet, but change.org petitions, where folks will kind of do online petitions and come out and say, "We have 80,000 people who oppose this development." Great, thank you for going to that effort, we can't really do much with them because we don't know where they're based, we don't know what information they've had, their comment is not based on what's happening inside this public hearing, it's based on the information that may be biased one way or another. So they're a little trick bag, but I have been dragged across hot coals for saying that before to residents, like, hey, thank you so much for going to this effort, but I can't do anything with it. So just be aware of them. But let's go to something you can do things with, your findings of fact. These cannot be understated how important this is. I was at a planning law seminar yesterday, and there was a case brought up of a municipality that had rejected a sober house, right, like a halfway house kind of thing for folks recovering from addiction. And the municipality had rejected the application out of hand, they'd said this business can't operate in the area they wanted to. And the business owner, the business themselves, where they filed an application for special accommodations under the Fair Housing Act, which they have the right to do so. So the village did something that was very short-sighted, and they sued proactively, which is weird, you shouldn't do that. Not your decision, but just be aware of it, don't sue proactively. And it got, the village lost in the court, not because they violated the Fair Housing Act, not because they violated something like the Americans with Disability Act, the very first thing they failed on, they didn't have a findings of fact. That's how important this is. The court will look at that before they look at pretty much anything else, they'll look at what is the basis of your decision. So that's how important this is. They should be consistent with your plan, so I'll touch upon this later, but planning and zoning are two separate things, planning isn't zoning, zoning is a tool that is used to implement a plan. And as such, your findings of fact within your zoning code should be based upon your plan. They should be, you know, trying to guide that development in that direction, as I touched upon before. Let's talk about a legal basis real quick, it's something that we call the LaSalle factors, which is based upon a court case, the Illinois Supreme Court in 1957, of LaSalle Bank versus Cook County, that basically established that communities do have the right to zone and to prescribe what land uses go were, and your findings of fact within your community, and we've actually put yours in this presentation to go through briefly. But they should be based mostly, if not entirely, upon those factors that you see in that slide right there, so things like, how compatible is it with the existing uses in nearby property? Will it cause a decrease in the owner's property values? That's difficult, and I'm going to say that, and again, I'm not your attorney, but that's another real trick bag that people get into, is that you will typically hear that a lot as a resident who is concerned about a development going in near them, you will hear that a lot as, this is going to negatively impact my property value. That's really difficult to prove, and so although we have to take them into consideration in our findings of fact, we'll usually say something to the effect of, this will not negatively impact nearby property values. Another way to think of that is it will not provably negatively impact property values, because, I mean, how many things impact a property value, right? It's very difficult to prove, hand on heart, beyond all shadow of a doubt, one specific zoning decision has done that, so that's something just to be aware of. Let's talk special uses, so a thing that blows people's mind who aren't within the profession necessarily, a special use is a permitted use. You should think of it as a presumptive yes, is the word I will use, that's the words they use back in the UK, a presumptive yes. So folks kind of think that a special use is something that will allow it as long as X, Y, and Z. A special use is a permitted use. It's been considered to be appropriate for that zoning district, it just may need that little bit extra consideration, because there are things that can go wrong with it. So, you know, every case is unique, and listen to your staff and their staff report, but I would say from a mind frame and a point-of-view approach, go into this thinking, this use is correct and proper for the district it's in, let's find a reason why it shouldn't go there, rather than let's try and find a reason why it should, right? Because it should go there, there might just be something that comes up during the course of the staff review or the public hearing that unearths a reason why it might not be appropriate. And so to that point, specifically within your code, your findings of fact that you should be finding in the affirmative, I won't read them out, but, you know, your staff are producing those in the report, read those in the, ahead of the meeting in the staff report. Staff, feel free to argue against me on this one, but my personal standpoint is, if you disagree with something I've written in a findings of fact, and this is me speaking personally, not professionally right now, let me know by phone, let me know by email ahead of times, and maybe I can either give you my rationale as to how I came to that point of view. But we should be on the same page at the start of the meeting, okay? Your staff and the commission, we should all be on the same page as it pertains to those special use orders, the findings of fact, at the start of the meeting. Things can come up during the meeting that may, you know, I've had it happen to me before where a developer's said something, and I've literally been stood there and been like, "Never told me this information," and I asked, or "Your answer has changed since we spoke about this." And that's on them. If they get a continuance because of that, as Tom said before, that's on them. But your ideal should be that your staff and yourself are aligned, at least at the start of the meeting, preferably through it, because it isn't your job to do a full technical review during the meeting or in the two to three days you have before it. Your staff has put that time and effort into doing that, and they're professionals, and they should feel confident with their answers towards the findings of fact. Variations, do you guys get a lot of variations, different communities? Sometimes, I've had communities that never get them, is this something that comes up a lot? Yeah? All right, in that case, I'm going to say two things instead of one. "I want this" isn't a hardship, and I get that so much, right? Like, "I want a really big garage because Ford makes trucks big now." That's not a hardship. If you can afford the big Ford truck, that's not a hardship. A hardship is, hey, when this land was subdivided, my lot was put on a huge slope, and so I can't use my property, I need to move it up closer to the lot line. A hardship is, hey, ComEd came along and took a 20-foot easement to cross my property, I need to put my shed somewhere else. Those are hardships, it's things that aren't that person's fault. Something like, "I want a really big garage because I bought a monster truck," goes beyond that and comes outside the realm of your findings of fact, because then they're actually going to get something that is better than what their neighbors would have. It's not to allow them something outside of the realms of what your community allows in your code, it's to allow them something that your community would allow anyone to have, but their land prevents them from being able to have it, okay?
Typically, that we as a staff try to guide the applicant to describe their hardship. So they'll come to our counter and say that, and we as a staff will tell them, that's not really a hardship, and we will help guide them to discover what their hardship might be. So typically, you don't see any of that, because staff has already done a preemptive kind of review for you.
It happens, I mean, I've had it where I spent three to five days on the phone with a guy, like, hey, this is going to be a no, like, "By the code, you do not meet these findings of fact, there is no way that anyone in their right mind will find in this favor, please don't waste your time, please don't waste your money, here are some other options for you, but anyone has the right to apply." And it happens, but typically, your staff are trying to filter that. Moment of appreciation for your staff, really, I guess, at- Moment of appreciation for your staff really, I guess, at this point. We do see so much more than you guys do because we really are filtering as much as possible before it gets to you, be it a variation, be it someone who wants some insane business like a X lounge with extra alcohol. I've had that before. It happens. The other thing with variations, if you're getting a lot of them specifically on the same topic, that's a sign that you need a code amendment. That's a sign that something isn't working. And so have that dialogue with your staff. They will probably have recognized it too. But you guys, you know, a lot of you have a lot of experience working in this community. Have those conversations because you don't want to govern by exemption. You don't want to zone by variance. You want to have a code that works for people. And if everyone's coming forward with the same variances and you're granting them time and time again, your code needs to change.
We had that with three-foot fences for the longest time. So many people needed a four-foot fence and they would constantly.
Yep.
And usually we were granting it because it was very practical. You needed a four-foot fence.
Right.
And so we changed it.
It happens. Sometimes you'll get a run of them just because the timing and how long it takes sometimes to process a text amendment. But if you're finding these things, it's time for those conversations. And, you know, maybe it's something where you end up doing a whole change to the zoning code. Here again, your findings for variations typically depend on the community. Most communities require that all of them are found to be accurate. And it's also that a super majority is usually required in the case of a variation. A little note on that, abstentions go with the majority. So if you don't want to make a decision because it's a friend of your son's dog and you, you know, don't want him to feel bad, but you don't need to recuse yourself. And Tom will get into those differences later. An abstention will go with the majority in these cases. So, you know, have that conversation and that thought ahead of time. A good piece of advice when it comes to your findings of fact, these are all in your code. A lot of good commissioners will print these out. They'll have them laminated and they'll just keep them with them so that they can make quick reference to them. You're not making these decisions during the meeting. Your staff has done that like work for you. But it's just good to stay fresh with them. And so that you can look a petitioner in the eye and say, hey, I agree with staff that you don't meet 2A because. So it's always worth having notes to hand.
If I could just say, over the years too, many of you, many of you have heard from the staff say, if you would like to have reason to deny a project, use the finding of fact that you are reading and read that out loud as part of your denial and your reasoning for your denial. That's, that helps us legally.
Yeah, I mean, story time, real quick. I've tried that before. I've, a board where I've been previously had a particularly contentious case. One of those where 120 people show up and they're all very upset that how dare development happen? I was assured that when I bought my house, nothing else was going to get built ever again. We've all heard these stories. These happen, right? And so the applicant mostly met the code, but there were a few things where they did not meet the code. And as such, there was some gray area within those findings as to where the board could interpret it either way. They could agree. Staff felt that the findings of fact were met, but they could arguably agree that, well, they could deny it based on one of the findings of fact. We stress to them, hey, if you're going to deny this, we need to hear, I'm denying this based on 2C or whatever it might be. That's so important because we've been over this just before. These developers have a lot of skin in the game and I'm not saying they will. And I want you all to sleep soundly tonight, but they can sue. They can get very upset. They can feel like there's been a miscarriage of justice. And if the wrong thing gets said, that can fire them up. You know, if you have findings of fact and you can say, hey, you don't meet this, so I'm recommending denial. But instead you say, you know what? I agree with what Mary Sue said before, that we should probably put a complete moratorium on all development until a new plan is done, written by the residents themselves. That was what was said. We don't want to be doing that. So any particular questions on findings of fact, anything of that nature, before I pass you back into Tom's capable hands? It's really thrilling stuff, I know. Cool.
All right, so, fine print. We all like to read the fine print. I will go through this section fairly quickly. Ex parte communications is basically just talking to folks when we're not supposed to talk to them. So that's basically either maybe communicating with someone when you're conducting that site visit or if you're at the grocery store or at church and they say, oh, that's right. You're on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I saw there's some public notice for that project. And, oh, can I just take two minutes of your time because I really have concerns about that project? Can I tell you why I think you should recommend denial of that project? Oh, timeout. No, none of that. You should be telling folks, you have concerns, that's great. Either please come to the meeting or send an email to staff and they can look into something or, you know, whatever the case may be. But please, please, don't have any type of communication like that other than in this room during the public hearing, okay? Because as Phil just said, you don't want to have any legal issues and a developer misconstrues that maybe something was done outside of this room that swayed someone, one way or the other, to vote on a matter in a way that they maybe weren't going to vote on the matter by not reading the staff report, looking at the findings of fact, so on and so forth. So ex parte communication is really important to not do. So I think that's the gist of this slide. I will also mention that it's not only in-person communication. It's everyone's favorite thing to do these days, social media. So be careful on Facebook, be careful on Twitter. It's best just to not say anything. You could read the stuff because it's fun to read. It's fun to read all the stuff, right? That Amazon warehouse, every town's going to have an Amazon warehouse at every corner. But just, just don't, it's tempting, I know it is. We read the stuff too as planners and we think, where does this come from? But it's out there, just maybe bypass it and you'll be safer. And the town will be safer too, because again, you're representing the community. So it's really important just not to have that, those types of interactions or communication. In the public hearing.
I have a quick question. And Robert, this is to you. How is this different? We had something come before the zoning board for the massage therapy that, you know, we talked about amending. And we had somebody who was calling different people and, you know, had a very specific concerns that he wanted to get through. Although he did come to the session, he was calling us outside of that.
So he was not the applicant?
Okay, so it's when it's the.
You know, it was a fine line, I agree. But it was a text amendment brought to you by the staff.
Right.
So he was not the petition, not a developer. It was a little different.
So that would be different, okay.
You know, it is a fine line. That's a decision that you yourself, each of you can make in that situation.
But if it was a petition, you know, a developer or something.
Yes, absolutely, yes. You should, you should all say, I would like you to discuss this with staff and give your information to staff, maybe in the form of a memorandum. And then we can hand that out to you as an exhibit.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. And then that goes hand in hand with ethics. We all have to be ethical because again, that first bullet point there, we're serving the public interest without opportunity for personal or I'll say financial gain. So we're all here to be those, those public servants for the community. So if you have any questions, you know, you have fine staff here, you can ask those questions. And in turn, if it's more of a legal matter, they can ask the village attorney since we're all planners, not attorneys. And so if you do have a legitimate legal type question, the village attorney is there to answer those types of questions. So conflict of interest, this kind of goes hand in hand with the first slide that we had. What's considered a conflict of interest? And in instances of where maybe a commission member should recuse themselves from voting on a case. And so the colored sections here on the slide talk about when something might be considered a conflict of interest. And it's when you might have a business or a financial relationship with an applicant as either a client or a customer. Or you have a specific financial interest in the project as a partner. So if you are a co-owner of a business and that business needs special use approval, for instance, yeah, you don't want to vote on that case. That, I think that's pretty, pretty, kind of a, I don't want to say no-brainer, but that's kind of a no-brainer. So you need to recuse yourself. If it's your brother-in-law, let's say, and you have no financial interest whatsoever, or it's your neighbor across the street who's maybe requesting a fence variation, you might not feel comfortable with that, with that case. But since you don't have a financial interest per se, you can technically vote on that, on that project or on that case. If you want to talk to staff and say, hey, you know what? Are we going to have a quorum next week? Because I would like to recuse myself, I just don't feel comfortable. And there might be that, that on the bottom there talks about, is there going to be an appearance of being, you know, not proper if I'm voting and it's my brother-in-law? You can ask that question. And I think that's perfectly fine to recuse yourself as long as the rest of the members are going to be here or you're going to have a quorum. But technically or legally, you don't have to. So I think that's actually the next slide. I might have jumped the gun, sorry. Oops. Oh, maybe not. Did I just skip one? Well.
I had a situation one time where my next-door neighbor was adding a room addition and she needed the variance. And I recused myself, but I was for it. And so before I was, before I stepped out of the room, I made it very clear that she's a good neighbor, that I'm very supportive of this. And, you know, maybe it would be expected that I would vote against it or something. But I did recuse myself, but I expressed the positive things for it.
Okay.
So I would say, although it's that by.
Yep.
Again, not an attorney, but the attorneys I know and the ones who deliver this would always advise, if you're ever going to recuse, don't take part in any discussion on the matter. I've had it before where planning commissioners have debated, discussed, asked questions. And then at the very end of it all gone, oh, actually I have a conflict of interest, so I'm going to leave the room now. You should have left the room before. That, those should be the first and last words out of your mouth. So generally speaking, if you're in a situation where you need to declare something like this to the point where you're going to recuse, you just go on the record and say, I have a conflict of interest or something that could be perceived as one. I'm going to recuse myself from this matter and that is the end of your discussion on that topic.
And you should leave the room.
Yeah, and I did.
And then the staff will come get you after the vote.
We were meeting down at Apple Orchard.
You can't just recuse yourself and stay here. You really need to leave the room so that there's no appearance of impropriety.
Even if you break the quorum.
For a quorum, is that what you're saying?
I think you have to, right?
Yeah. You cannot, yes. And if it means that we don't have a quorum, then we don't have a quorum for that particular vote. And maybe they have to come, we have to continue it to the next meeting. Yes.
I would agree, yeah, yeah.
But I like your idea of notifying staff.
Right, so they know ahead of time.
And usually, over the years, everyone's pretty much done that. You typically call us, so, and we'll help guide you through that. And then we'll always double check with the village attorney too. So, and sometimes it's not a conflict.
Yeah.
Right, somebody else might think it is.
Right, and, and.
I kind of liked that green bullet point on the last one that said, appearance of conflict.
Right.
Even the appearances.
Right, right. Yeah, so this slide here, so we just talked about this, how you should recuse yourself. And staff will come out in the hallway and get you when the hearing is over. But what's not a conflict, so if you're voting on, you know, general laws, you know, if you're doing a text amendment, that's for the entire community, so that's not a conflict of interest. If it's a request from an organization that you're a member of, so if it's your church, let's say, and I'm assuming maybe churches are special uses in town, maybe? So if they need a special use amendment, you can still vote on that matter. Again, you might not feel comfortable, so you can talk to staff about that. But you can vote on it because that's technically not a conflict of interest. Or again, if it's a, if you're related by blood or marriage to the applicant, but you have no financial connection to that project, you can still technically vote on it if you feel comfortable and if you're going to have the quorum. So, so these slides, I think, if you wanted to keep those slides, kind of if you have a little folder or something that you bring to your, to meetings every, every month, these might be some slides that you want to hold on to, just so you think, oh, wait a second. Well, maybe before you even get to the meeting, hold on to these slides just to see, you know, is this a case where I might have to recuse myself? Should I, should I contact staff just to, just to see, is this, is this one of those scenarios or one of these situations? Because it can be tricky because you're all residents and you know people in town. And so this is going to come up at some point, probably for all of you. In 40 years, I'm sure it's come up maybe more than once. So, so yeah, it's, it can be tricky. So it's better to be safe than, than have an issue for the village.
And sometimes there are people before the meeting that are going to presume that you might be for or against something.
Sure.
And that has nothing to do with it. We had a commercial development, the CVS at Devon and Main. I had a close neighbor that said, oh, you're opposed to that, aren't you? I said, absolutely not. And you have a lot of nerve being opposed to it. I said, because that was own business long before you ever moved into the neighborhood. I said, I don't intend to vote against it. I let him know ahead of time. You know, that would be a conflict of interest if, if I came out against it because my neighbors were opposed to it. I didn't get on the board to be a conduit for my neighbors, you know?
Sure. Or you could actually just say, boy, you know what? If you want to see how I vote, seven o'clock, that first Thursday of the month, come and join us and I'll show you how I vote, right? You could do that too. Yeah, yeah. Open Meetings Act, I'm sure you guys do maybe Open Meetings Act training or there's that, there's the training that everyone has to do. So I'm sure you're all familiar with that, just making sure that you're being transparent. And with the next slide, I think it talks about the fact that basically every meeting is, is a public meeting. So this meeting, the village board meeting, so you want to make sure that, you know, that, again, as we, as we previously talked about, that all the information is being done in this room during the public hearing and not behind closed doors. Or again, via, you know, email discussions. What we do in Carol Stream, this might seem kind of strange, but when we send email correspondence to our commission members, not that we don't trust them, but we blind copy everyone. Okay, so then no one will be offended when I say this because that reply all button, we've all done it at some point, right? And you do it by mistake, but in the case of a commission group, it could be an issue at some point. Now, if someone just says, you know, they've gotten their packet and someone just says, have a nice weekend, that's not an issue if you reply all. But if you say, have a nice weekend, and boy, we're going to have a lot of reading to do on that project. And I don't even know why we have to spend all the time because we know we're all going to recommend denial of that CVS. Ooh, yeah, don't put that in an email and don't say reply all. So, so just be, be careful and be safe with, with all, all forms of communication, especially email and social media. So that might be it, yes. So if you have questions on that, let me know, otherwise.
Just, just a point of clarification.
Sure.
On open meetings.
Oh, yeah.
You can have a discussion one-on-one with another commissioner on the topic, on the case.
You could, you could. Although you probably, you could, but it's generally safer to try to just have the discussion or ask the questions either with staff or during the meeting itself. So, yeah. Because again, you don't want there to be.
Our rule of thumb is two is okay, three is a problem.
Yeah, and you don't want there to be an appearance of you're, you're kind of ganging up on maybe the applicant and, boy, so you're not in favor of this case, you're not in favor of this project, right? Because I'm not, so you're not either, right? Okay, good. So there's two votes against the project. So I'm going to go talk to, I'm going to go talk to someone over there real fast. Again, not that anyone here is going to do something like that. And maybe it's just a matter of you have a quick question. You know, I was reading the report, did you understand point number three? Oh, you did? Is that, is that how you thought that that's what they meant? Okay, that's what I thought too. So maybe that's, that's the question that someone might have. That's probably okay. But again, we usually tell folks, maybe direct your questions just to staff versus talking to each other about the, about the case. Then you're safe. Then you don't have to worry about anyone ever thinking there was something being talked about behind closed doors or behind their backs or anything like that. It's tough to do because it's just human nature. You want to talk about something with your fellow commission members. So one-on-one. So one-on-one might be okay, but sometimes it's just easier to talk to your friendly planners and...
I've had people before say, well, how do you think the commission will vote on it? Well, I have no idea. We don't discuss it ahead of time.
Right.
You need to come to the public hearing, because we're going to base things on what comes out at the hearing.
Right. Yeah, that's perfect. Yep. Yes, yeah. Great. All right. So now I think you're going to hear all about, I don't remember, Tools of the Trade. There you go.
About something else.
Is that Ray?
That's Ray.
Ray, you're still on the line?
Ray, you're muted. He's still on.
I never would have guessed.
Commissioners, I want to wait until the presentation's over, okay? I'm sorry, I jumped in too soon. Please let them finish and then...
Renee's still on the line, too.
Yeah, I know.
Go back to sleep.
I thought the, I thought the presentation was over. I'm too quick on this. I'll wait, okay? Sorry, I'm premature. I'm going on mute.
I'll make it real quick for you, Ray, I promise. We're almost there. We're almost there. Just one thing that kind of struck me as I walked up. You all have beautiful Chromebooks, which is incredible, right? That's such a good thing, as I mentioned before. Try not to message each other on them during meetings. It has happened where commissioners or board members have been like sending each other texts. Anything you do during a meeting that is a form of communication is part of the public record and is subject to Freedom of Information Act requests and is considered to be part and parcel. So if you have anything to say, that's what your microphone's for. You all seem very astute individuals, but by saying anyway, because it's happened, people have fallen into that trap where they'll be in a meeting and slinging texts to each other, like, oh, man, this developer's presenting for way too long. That can all be part and parcel. If there is a lawsuit of the discovery, and then your phone gets searched by lawyers, I don't know about you, but I don't want any lawyers getting their hands on my phone, so it's worth just keeping it in the pocket or keeping the Chromebook just for reviewing your agenda while you have it. Cool.
And your emails to staff are also subject to freedom of information. So please remember that. I always suggest a phone call.
Or a voicemail.
Yes.
And don't leave a voicemail.
I need to discuss something with you.
Right, just say, could you please call?
My favorite rule of thumb is every email you send, before you hit send, close your eyes and imagine if that was printed and put on a banner on the side of village hall. How would you feel? Because that's basically what is happening with every email you send, right? Anyone in the village, outside the village, can see it. So think about how you would feel if that was blown up 20 feet wide and hung from the side of a flagpole. Rules of thumb for us staff, too. I mean, I definitely am prone to typing furiously and then deleting it, just to get it out as a little therapy exercise. And that's why you do that, before you put the email address of who you're sending it to in, so that way you can't accidentally hit send. Let's talk about planning. That's what I do. I'm a long-range planner, so that means I do less of the day-to-day zoning and fences and things like that, and I focus very much on this kind of thing. Plans are super cool and super important. They guide your community's vision, and many of them will have a vision statement in them that will be a piece of prose written in the future tense that says, the year is 2050, and the village of Bartlett has flying cars and things like that, and it talks, it's very aspirational. It talks about what we want to be. And so there are many different plans that conform that. A comprehensive plan looks at everything in your village. A neighborhood plan may be focused on a very specific area. A transportation plan is going to look at how people...
I have an award document. Type it there. If you want to send it, copy and paste.
Renee, could you mute yourself?
No, it's okay, as long as you guys can all hear it, too. So the piece there at the bottom, you know, the fundamentals of planning are universal. As I mentioned, I didn't train over here, I studied in a different country, but good planning is good planning, and it is my humble opinion, the good planning, the basic tenants, good public engagement, good vision statements, those are universal, they apply in any town, any county, any state, any country. So let's dive in a little bit. Guardian Leviosa. There we go. All right. The comprehensive plan is the baseline, and like I said, depending on where yours is at, that really will be the base for most of your decisions. If you do end up rewriting a zoning code, anyone is going to start with your comprehensive plan, because your zoning is supposed to be one of the key tools that implements that particular plan. The authority, so units of local government, towns, municipalities, villages, cities, only exist because states allowed them to. It's in the Constitution that the federal government gives the power to the states, who then passes it through to each individual unit of local government. And so we have that power because of the Illinois State statute that enables us to create our own plans and shape our own communities. And then, as mentioned before, we then have the power to zone to realize that future. Typical topics included in a comprehensive plan, a lot of the times it will be land use. More often than not, that ends up being the piece of the comprehensive plan that mostly gets looked at. You'll have a nice little map showing pretty little colors of the uses you envision for different pieces of the village, and as comprehensive plans get older, most of the other pieces get forgotten, but people keep coming back to that piece. You may take a look at public facilities, so something I'm working on is looking at things like that. How can we best place our village buildings so that it makes the most sense? Economic development, everybody wants it. You'll see that a lot of communities in Illinois have a ton of space zoned for retail, because we all really want to attract retailers, because that brings in sales tax, but that might not always be the best way to approach things, right? Public participation is huge. It's a two-way street. So, you know, a lot of people will hear the term "public participation" and expect that to be very passive, that we just want, hey, come in and give us your ideas, and we're going to stand here and nod and say, you know it better than we do. It's a two-way street. We want to educate them and say, hey, we think this is good, we are professional planners, we are planning and zoning commission members who really care about our community, and this is what we think, what do you think? So it should be a two-way conversation. It should be to listen, but it should also be an element of education. And there's a lot of different ways you can do it. You know, if you do end up going through this process, if you've been through the process, when your staff puts out that request for proposals, when they ask for, you know, bringing in a consultant, which more often than not you will, any part of the response from a consultant should include their proposal for how they're going to approach this, because it is important. It's a legal requirement, but it does genuinely make for better plans. Planners like to use the term "buy-in" a lot, you know, you want the community's buy-in to the process. You only get that buy-in by them having had a seat at the table from the very beginning. So, you know, when it comes to your role in the process, my take on it is, we shouldn't be arguing the minutia of whether a building is a particular fit or whether a use is a particular fit. Like I said before, special uses should usually be considered to have been correct. We really should have decided that at this part of the process. We should have had that conversation about what do we want our community to look like at this part of the process? And then what we're doing is checking our work, right? Well, this is what we've said we want, does this match with that? That's what we should be getting into at that point in the process. When it comes to working with the public, if you do go through a planning process, chances are, as I've said multiple times, you're going to be there. There's a few things that you should be looking for. You're not going to get maximum turnout, you're going to get a few really, really keen people, and then a few people who just turned up. If you feed them, they will come, that's my golden rule. Donuts and coffee at every public meeting, that's like the best way to make sure people turn up. It never fails. There's going to be questions, teach don't lecture, have that conversation, make it two-way, it's so much more engaging for both of you. And in that public hearing, as Tom mentioned before, you folks are setting the standard. You are the ones who are trying to create a welcoming environment, and so by being confident in your staff, by having those conversations ahead of time, and then by running the meeting in an orderly fashion, everybody else, it signals to your audience, who maybe this is their first time participating in something like that, it signals to them that they're in an environment where they can participate and that this is a professional, well-run organization. So setting that standard is key. I'm not going to go through the whole "who are your neighbors" thing. I take all of those bullet points, and I condense them into one question that I believe should be asked of every plan: who's missing? I don't need to sit there with a checklist and go, okay, have I thought about this? Have I thought about that? I just simply look at it and go, who haven't I thought about? Look at that community snapshot that I mentioned before, be aware of your neighbors. There will be changes in demographics, you know, there will be more diversity in your community, there will be more folks coming in from different countries, like me. There will be people who don't have access to the internet, even though we all take that for granted these days. Whenever you're going through a planning process, I think it's a great question to keep in your mind, who is missing from this? Who haven't we heard from? Who doesn't this plan take into consideration? And finally, plans are great as long as they don't just sit on a shelf. Implementation is, it's a big buzzword in planning schools, but it's so important, and, you know, is a key part of my job right now. I'm going into a monthly implementation meeting tomorrow where we check in on how we're doing of actually putting that into action. Plans have a shelf life. They will expire, markets will change, pandemics will ravage the planet, things will happen that our great little vision will need to change and adapt, and we won't be able to do that unless we're monitoring and implementing our plans. So there's tools we have to do that, things that you might be less involved in, such as TIF and other financing incentives to try and drive development the way we want it to, things you will be involved in, like the procedures, the development reviews, the zoning codes. All of those are ways to implement plans, and they should all be having those plans considered. And then if things aren't working, if the market has changed drastically, that's when you need to revisit your plan. It doesn't always need to be a completely new comprehensive plan. A lot of plan commissioners will always be thinking about that. They'll be like, oh, everything has changed, we need a new comprehensive plan. You might not. You might just need a new sub-area plan. For example, Sam's Club, right? Pulled out of a lot of different Illinois municipalities a few years ago. A lot of municipalities looked at the areas where those stores were, and they created sub-area plans that focused in on a very specific part of their municipality, their community, and said, okay, this is an opportunity that we now have for redevelopment, let's focus our efforts and create a vision for this area. It doesn't always need to be village-wide. Any questions on plans, long-range stuff, visions, anything like I just spoke about? Any particular recommendations on the coffee and donuts that bring people to meetings? I would say...
Country donuts.
Yeah, do a local donut store. Like, that's a genuine thing. Do local, because people are always way more impressed with that than they are with Duncan. Cool. Tom, you want to bring us home?
I didn't see the slide with veneer.
Local is good, but I do like veneer. Okay, so we are almost at the end. So you have the plan in place, and then you have the regulations that kind of go after the plan, right? And so regulating development. So there was the famous case from the 1920s. Oh, boy, I just forgot, Euclid versus something, something, something. Euclid versus Ambler Realty, where it, the case actually spelled out, yeah, you can zone land for residential use or for commercial use or for industrial use. A community or a municipality can do that. I think it was in Ohio. I should remember these things, sorry. But I think that's, I think that's where it was. And so you're looking at general health, safety, and welfare when you're looking at different zoning districts or different zoning areas. And so you want to make sure that your codes and your ordinances have clear structure and that you're applying things consistently, too. So you never want to do anything like spot zoning, where maybe you have an area that's totally zoned for commercial development, and then smack dab in the middle, you have something that's zoned for industrial, for instance, something quirky like that. You also want to make sure that when you have your regulations or your codes and ordinances, that you have predictable, fair, and a timely process, because again, time is money, right? And so developers want to go through a process in as quick of a manner as possible, and from staff's perspective, they want to give information to folks to say, if you follow this process, or if you follow these regulations, or if you follow these standards, and you come before our Planning and Zoning Commission, ideally, ideally, you should get a thumbs up from them. So that's how it should work most of the time. So zoning, I think probably all of you are familiar with kind of what zoning is. Again, it goes somewhat hand-in-hand with planning, and as Phil mentioned, planning and zoning are not the same thing. Zoning is looking at kind of what you can do on that specific property. So you're looking at setbacks, you're looking at building heights, you're looking at lot coverage or floor area. So how things can be built or developed on that specific piece of property, or what's not going to be built, you know, how much open space you're going to have on the property, which is equally as important. And so it's the tools to implement the plan by regulating all those various components on the property itself, okay? And so this illustration here, look, ooh, sorry, looks at all those items that I just mentioned. So the different zoning districts, so when you look at the zoning map, and it's got all the different colors on there, you've got the residential districts, single-family and multifamily. You've got industrial, you've got commercial, you've got the open space areas, you've got certain overlay districts. You could also have mixed use, where you've got residential and commercial potentially, either in the same building or maybe just on the property itself. And so those are the different types of zoning districts that you'll typically see in not just your community, but in most suburban communities. And then you've got the various types of zoning approvals. A lot of these we've already talked about, permitted uses where there's no need for a public hearing, the special use where, again, as Phil mentioned, they're technically allowed or permitted, but they just need the public hearing, because there's additional criteria or additional regulations that need to be looked at for those uses within those different zoning districts. A variation request for various items, whether it's for a sign or a setback or a fence, for instance, parking relief potentially, a plan development or a PUD, which we're going to talk about in a second on one of the next slides. And then conditions associated with those items. There needs to be a rational nexus for that proposal, so there needs to be a connection for that proposal or for that request with what's actually being requested. And all of this information needs to be listed in the approving ordinance. So I'm assuming everything gets approved via an ordinance that then goes to the village board, probably, so that's critical or that's crucial. I think in one of the slides that we looked at, in one of the first sections, it discussed that you can add conditions of approval to a project. So if there are stipulations or items that you feel are important for a variation or for a special use, staff a lot of times will add conditions based on their staff recommendation. Likewise, the commission can add conditions of approval as well. So that's important to remember. So a PUD or a plan development, this is beneficial for the developer, but it also can be beneficial for the community as well. So suburbs, especially, you know, in our area, we're pretty much built out. And so what little vacant land we have left, you know, we have to kind of be flexible with our design pattern, I'll call it. And so we have our codes and our ordinances for, let's say, a subdivision of how the street pattern needs to be, how the open space needs to be laid out, and how the lots have to be laid out as well. But maybe based on what vacant land we have left in our community, or if a property's going to be annexed in, it might not fit into those regulations or those codes, per se. But with a PUD or a plan development, you can have some flexibility, not that you should just totally disregard all of those codes and ordinances, but you could have some flexibility or creativity with how you're laying out that plan. So maybe you're going to cluster the open space into more of a central area, so it's more beneficial for that subdivision that's going to be approved as a plan development. Or maybe you're going to have more creativity with the street layout. Maybe the street isn't going to be, the right-of-way isn't going to be as large or as wide as you would typically see. A lot of times our subdivision codes were written maybe in the '70s or the '80s, and so at that time, there was a certain standard for roadway or right-of-way widths. Maybe now... Maybe now, you want to have a different type of development, where maybe the right-of-way width is a little narrower, or maybe you're going to allow, I'm just making stuff up, so, don't point to staff and say, "Hey, wait a second, we didn't allow that in the last subdivision. You guys had us review last month." But, maybe you're going to allow on-street parking in a certain new subdivision, where you don't normally allow that. So, you can have some creativity or some flexibility in a PUD or in a plan development that you might not normally see or allow in another subdivision or in another type of development, which might be acceptable. And, you know, like I mentioned, that might be okay to do, given the lack of land or the lack of space we have in town. So, it's really a great tool. I like, oh, go ahead, sorry, yeah.
I was going to say, Naperville is doing something like that now. They're doing a change for multifamily areas where there are only one-car garages, and the cars would hang over the sidewalk.
Sure.
And they will allow homeowner associations to give placards or something to allow on-street parking where it had normally been forbidden. But, they're doing it where things are so tight that it's not practical for some of the areas to have a strict adherence to it.
Sure, yeah, because things change over time. So, you know, you kind of have to change a little bit, or be a little more creative with-
Right.
-some of the codes and ordinances that you have in place. Again, it doesn't mean you disregard all of those codes and ordinances. You have to have that nexus, or that, kind of that connection. It doesn't mean that a developer can build a, you know, 10-story building just because they want to. There has to be some reason or some justification for that flexibility in the design, or in the way, the approach that they're taking for that plan development. Do you, I mean, do you get a lot of plan developments here in town, or does it depend on, do you? Okay, all right. And is it both residential and commercial, or?
It depends.
Okay.
This is getting very technical, but-
Uh-oh.
...in our code, it's probably the most confusing part of our code is, a plan development is actually a PD district in our code. And a plan unit development is a special use permit.
Okay.
And I know that's a little, it's hard to understand, but almost every plan development is also a PUD.
Okay.
So, we'll talk about that later when we, but typically, when, how the staff looks at a plan development, it contains a mixture of uses. So, staff is not as willing to rezone a property to a PD district if it doesn't have a mix of uses, residential and commercial. So, the grasslands that just recently came in, it had townhomes, it had single-family, it had active adult, and it had commercial. Staff was okay with that coming in with the request to rezone it to the PD district. Okay? Something, what's the PUD that we've had? Commercial. We had two buildings on one zoning lot. The Hanover Township Campus Expansion is coming in as a, it's P1, Public Land, PUD. Special use and rezoning. PUD because there were two principal structures on one zoning lot, right?
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of times for our subdivisions that you see the PUD at, it's that we're using most of the zoning regulations for the underlying district, say, as SR3. Maybe because they're giving us extra open space, we take the SR3 district and reduce some of their setbacks. So, it's pretty much close to what the original zoning was, but it's a little bit of give-and-take. Whereas a plan development, there's no underlying zoning, like setbacks in both apartments. We can pick and choose what we like for that specific plan development. That's how we get a little different. Yeah. There's a method to our reasoning.
It'll be in the findings effect.
Clear as mud. Say, that's going to be on the quiz at the end of the session.
Oh, jeez.
No, that's cool. That's, no, that's very interesting, yeah. That's a good setup, too. Keeping zoning current, I think this was touched on already. If there's a provision that maybe you're recommending approval of a variation for pretty consistently, then work with staff on, maybe it's worthwhile to amend your code. And look at sections in your, you know, within your, you know, within your community if rezoning should be necessary, although that is a policy decision, so maybe the elected officials should look at that more so. And here's just another flow chart. Here's an example of a plan development process, although it was just described what your process is, so I might just skip this slide. Yes, yes. And then, looking at subdivisions, and kind of the subdivision process, a lot of times, the subdivision process is a little more technical, you know, in terms of how I work on subdivisions. I work with our, the engineering department quite extensively on subdivisions, because there's a large engineering component to subdivisions, looking at where utilities are going to be located, detention basins, so on and so forth. And so, you typically will have kind of the preliminary plat process, where you're kind of laying things out more or less for how that subdivision is going to be defined, more or less. And then, the final plat, which will be reviewed by this commission. And then, you'll have the final plat process, where ideally, all the, I'll say, the fun stuff, has already been laid out and designed and defined with the preliminary plat. And so, the final plat is just that. It's the final layout of what, 99% of which should have already been done with the preliminary plat. That's the final plat. And in some instances, I don't know if it works like this here in Bartlett, so hopefully no one throws anything at me, but sometimes, if it's a relatively simple subdivision, you can combine the preliminary and final plat, if that's ever allowed. Maybe if it's a two-lot or a three-lot subdivision, it might not be worth, you know, having someone do a preliminary and final plat. But, if it's something a little more elaborate, like, I mean, what we see here on the screen, you probably want to do a preliminary plat, lay everything out, lay the groundwork out first, and then do the final plat. So, I'm sure you-
That's all done well before it gets to us. I mean, the developer has their concept, I would guess, and they go to staff, and then you give them what you like, what you maybe don't like, what is-
We have a lot of comments, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
By the time it gets to you, we've ironed out a lot. But, you still have the authority. You're going to be reviewing a preliminary subdivision plan, and the majority of your work is done at that level. So, and then, six months from then, we're going to bring back probably the final plat of subdivision, and you're relying on staff to tell you, it's basically the exact same thing you saw before, but it's just refined, and it's a plat for recording, and a lot of times, it's just a rubber stamp. Should be very simple. If there's any changes, staff will not say that it's in substantial compliance. So, you'll hear us say that quite often on a final plat of subdivision. This is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plans that you've already reviewed and approved.
That's a good point, too, that the final plat's the one that's going to be recorded with the county, too. So, yes, yeah. All that technical stuff, right? So, but, yeah, the preliminary plat, that's kind of the key plan that will be reviewed for a subdivision. So, I think we talked, we just talked about all of this, what kind of, what typically goes through on a subdivision itself. You're looking at the roadways, the sidewalks, the utilities, so on and so forth, and you're reviewing both preliminary and final plats. Annexations, the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, you're not necessarily going to be reviewing annexation requests or annexation agreements. At least, I, well, I'm assuming that they don't. That's probably a village board matter. Annexations, yeah. So, you might review the rezoning of a piece of property that is unincorporated and is going to be annexed into the village, right? Or something that might be, that might need special use once it's annexed into the village. But, again, the annexation request itself, that's done at the village board level. But, just so you're familiar with what an annexation request is, it's obviously unincorporated land that's adjacent to the village, that's going to be annexed or incorporated into the village of Bartlett. And I think, if you have questions about any of that, please ask. Otherwise, I think we were at the final, like, three or four slides. Throw for it. Yes.
So, this is going to take me all of, like, three seconds. This is something that, you know, we recommend you stay on top of, right? We recommend you stay current, and there's a whole bunch of resources that help you to do that. I don't know about your staff. I mean, they're clearly excellent, so I'm sure they are, but I'm a giant planning nerd, so I was, on my way here, I stopped off at a Chili's for dinner, and I'm sitting there reading law textbooks while I do, because that's just the type of Thursday night I like to have. But, there's a lot of free resources that are available to you outside of the realm of books. Libraries have a ton of things. The APA website, both the national and ours. While we'd love for you all to become members, there's a lot of stuff that's available even prior to membership. Articles, blog posts, videos are all up and available there. There is a commissioner newsletter that looks at these issues through the lens of a plan commissioner. Obviously, you have all of these, ton of different websites. Planetizen is great for, they do a lot of summaries of national and local issues, so they'll take a news report, and they'll kind of summarize that. They do have some paid things, too, but there's a lot of stuff you can get on there for free. Some of the ones at the bottoms are a little bit more specialized. Strong Towns is much more about economic development and walkability. Saving Places and Landmarks are a little bit more historical preservation. Pete Pointner is a one-man writing machine. He's been in planning for something like 275 years at this point, and he just writes. I mean, the things that that man writes about, and he puts it all on his website for free. I was, like, scrolling through his website today, and I found he somehow managed to write an article on how planning finds its basis in the Christian Bible, and I don't know how he thought of that topic idea, but here we are. He has a lot of information, all available for free. Diversity and inclusiveness is key, it's important, and it's something that we're really, really, I think, as humans, trying to get better at all the time, and so we have a lot more informational, free videos, written pieces, there's specific training you can take on that. It's a really great way to kind of understand your community better and get some different voices at the table, because that really does make for better plans and better places they're in. But, seriously, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. You guys didn't have to be here tonight. You don't have to be here on the first Thursday of every month, but you choose to be, because you care about this place, and that's important, and we need more people who do that. It makes our jobs easier, and it makes our places better. So, thank you for being here, thank you for listening, and we're always happy to take questions at any time.
I just want to let you know, these two gentlemen volunteer to do this.
Thank you.
We're very appreciative.
Roberta?
That's it. Roberta?
Yes, yes.
Roberta, it's Ray. I have a few comments, all right? Am I live? Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, great. First of all, I'd like to thank the presenters this evening for the very fine presentation they brought forward to us. And, secondly, you know, there were a number of topics that were brought up this evening that really, that I've always been involved in, and that's to encourage our commissioners to visit the project sites when they're in front of them. It's very important for them to take a look at these projects. You know, you and I have met on a number of these projects and talked about these things. And I really believe that one of the most important things are to discuss any questions that someone would have with staff prior to doing it at a meeting. You know, you have so much information from staff, it's unbelievable. And honestly, and number three is, you know, you have to be respectful to the petitioners that are coming before us. It's an integral, you know, it's just the image of our Bartlett. And I believe that's what staff is doing right now. You're doing everything possible that you can to bring, develop the village of Bartlett the way it is. And the one thing the commissioners have to know, all right, and we sit through this at the village board, we don't represent just one neighborhood. We represent the entire community of Bartlett, and that's the important thing that they have to have in mind. And commissioners, I'll tell you what, I'm very in favor of the new appointments that have all been made, and I know your job's not going to be easy, and our job is not easy, but we'll all work together, and hopefully, you know, Bartlett will grow and develop in a community that we're all proud to live in. And that's all I have for you tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Renee?
Hi, everyone. So, this, Renee Sawansky. I wanted to thank, that was a great presentation. Thank you very much for inviting us, so that we could attend this. I try and make a point to go back and listen to the audio of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, of the BDE meetings, of the economic development meetings, so that I have an idea of where you all are coming from before it even gets to the board level, and it is very clear that the staff and the commissioners do all the heavy lifting before it even gets to us. And I know that all of us on the board really appreciate the work that you do. And going back to Roberta asking me to mute myself earlier, I apologize for that. I was mumbling, as anybody, if you get to know me, you'll know that I tend to do that to myself. But, I was in agreement on that, on the putting things in writing, and I think I was going to, was trying to say that sometimes, when I am wanting to pop off a rant, as it was said before, I'll just open a Word document and type it over there, and then when I get it the way I want it to be, then I just copy and paste it. So, thank you for your patience with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I believe there's a survey, correct? You want them to fill that out?
Yes, so, we do have a survey in your packets. There's sort of been a sign-in sheet that went around as well. So, if you haven't had a chance to complete the sign-in sheet, please make sure you do so. We take that back to our executive director, and they will process the sign-in sheet and get you all certificates of completion for tonight, so you all have some proof that you attended this, and something extra to stick up on your fridges. There is also a survey. We genuinely take that feedback on board, like, I was not making it up before. The point that I raised about someone was like, "Hey, you should produce a list of questions that we can keep in our pockets, so we have them." That came from one of these surveys of the session I ran recently. So, we do read them. I will scan them all in and send them back to our HQ, and we are constantly tweaking and evolving this program. You know, it used to begin with a 20-minute section on historical planners through the ages, and we were like, "You know what? Maybe we should talk about the people who are giving up their evenings to be there first. That's probably more interesting than someone who died 100 years ago." So, it is a constantly evolving process, and your feedback really helps us with that. So, thank you.
And we'll send that to you. We'll get, we'll get that to you.
I can save them with the [inaudible].
Oh, okay. All right. All right.
We have a super short.
Yeah, we have. You can if you want, but you do not have to. Oh, my gosh. Okay. I think they're all diligently filling out their survey.
We're waiting for somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
We still have a couple of items. We have some items still. You can't pack up, Charlie.
Came off seven days vacation.
Florida.
We do have old business, new business. Do you want us to start going over that, Mike, while you guys are completing your surveys a little bit? Okay, so, go ahead, Kristy.
In your packet, I gave you a few samples of rules and procedures. We are supposed to formally adopt some, according to the new Chapter 13 that was recently adopted, which created this commission. So, I gave you a couple options to look through. Feel free to look and research other planning and zoning rules and regulations for their procedures. And for our next meeting, in your packet, I will give you a draft, where it kind of has some of the different options you can choose, and we can have a discussion on what, how you want the rules of procedure for this new commission.
Okay, that would be good.
You know, like, one of the items the plan commission used to have is they would end at 10 o'clock. Not bad.
We saw that. Why? That's excellent.
You can always make it 9:00 if you want. It's up to you, but, you know, it's items like that. So, kind of, it was, what were the-
how you want the rules of procedure for this new commission.
Okay, that would be good.
You know, like, one of the items the Plan Commission used to have, is they would end at 10 o'clock. Not bad.
We saw that.
That's excellent.
You can always make it nine, if you want. It's up to you, but, you know, it's items like that. So kind of, it was, what were the communities, Lyle?
Okegan.
Okegan, Lyle. So we just pulled some together, just mark down what you like, let us know, and we'll put something, a draft together, and then you guys can talk about it.
We had that with the zoning board with Don Schrade, and I continued it, because when I first got on, these meetings would go till after midnight, sometimes.
Yeah. Well, and then you also need to think about, if you want to, which you probably should, is decide on a vice chairman, in case Mr. Weirden isn't available at a meeting. So you should have a backup. So something to think about. Okay? Anything else with that?
That's the only thing with the rules of procedure. So let me know if there's any things you really liked, or if there's anything else you could think of to add to it. The other document that we had in the packet was a link to various village plans that have been adopted. The zoning code, the subdivision ordinance, the things that you should be familiar with, and what we're supposed to be basing our recommendations and decisions on.
All that stuff.
All that stuff, everything we kind of covered today. So that way, we'd like you to pin it on your Chromebook, so you have access to it, so you can quickly refer to any of those documents, when you're looking at your staff reports. And then the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, so I checked with the village attorney. If you have previously completed your Open Meetings Act, which I believe all of you have, except Julie, right, Julie? You do not have to, as part of this newly-created commission, retake your Open Meetings Act training. Okay? So you're all, you all should be good. Julie, we just found out today, the website is back up and running on the state, so you can click on that, go to that link, and you could go through your training. And then we're going to have Steve do his training as well. So it's just the two of you that need to complete this. And you have 90 days, so I don't think it's going to be a problem, but yes. If you could just complete that, and let us know, and then you're good.
I would like to see us have what to do in an emergency, like, if there's a gunman. It's been a while since we had the police training.
You would like some more, because we have new members, some police, like the evacuation and that type of thing. Okay, sure, we can do that.
So we do not have to turn out, or fill in and turn out, the economic statement?
Okay, no, that's something different. The economic statement, there were, I will not name names. You know who you are, you have not completed your statement. If you had it in front of you on the dais, you need to complete it. If you did not get one, you're good.
Ask Lorna.
Yes, I turned my ears.
So I think, what is the deadline, May 1? You have to turn that in, so. Yeah, if you could please complete that, Lorna is pushing us to get you to submit that. Anything else? I think that's all we had. You had a lot tonight. There's a lot.
Okay, we.
You guys did a good job.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job, very informative. Probably as time goes on, I think it was a good idea to mention, too, that reality changes. And, I mean, look at how years ago, the idea of the regional mall was like a big thing, and everybody wanted it. And now, these malls are dying. And so something has to change, and we see that all the time. Who would have ever dreamed that cannabis would be legal 20 years ago, right?
And that's coming.
You're right. Any further discussions? Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Jan, seconded by Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Thank you very much.